Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council meeting of February 6th. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We have opportunities every once in a while to start our meeting not with business but with wonderful news. We have a group of students and a teacher here from Mount Hope High School, Saul for Tomorrow. They're going to do a Mount Hope High School, Saul for Tomorrow 2019 presentation. And Ms. Mary Cabral is here, the teacher. If you could come up and share with us? Yeah, that's okay. Absolutely.
Should we talk into the microphone?
Yes, please. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you so much for having us this evening. My team and I are very excited to be here. And guys, maybe you can come on this side. Just stand right here and we can share with the team. We actually reached out to your chairman here and our chairman because we live in town and go to school in town. And we wanted to share with you because sometimes you get this great opportunity where the lines of school and town and state and maybe even national lines blur and they all come together for a great learning opportunity for kids. And so that's what's happened to us. We began a year ago, over a year ago now, working at Kicking Moot Middle School. And there we were working on a project to decrease distractibility of devices. We all know that's a problem. And so we were participating in a problem solving competition. And we were able to become state finalists last year at Kicking Moot Middle School. And then all of my students here graduated and went up to Mount Hope High School. And they were literally state finalists, one point away from winning the state title. So I approached the superintendent and the high school principal and I said, please, can I work with them another year? These kids are ready to really grow. And so this year we have tried again and we asked your town official or our town officials in order to do a project where we could study the safety of travelers. And we were thinking about Bristol and how Bristol is a place where so many people come to enjoy our beautiful coastline, but also the great activities we have all summer long. These kids all attend all of the concerts and the fireworks and the parade and they participate in it. And so it's near and dear to our hearts. And we know that as a town, it's really challenging to keep everyone safe. We know that they considered shortening the parade a couple of years ago because of the safety of travelers and also the parade route being long and just taking into consideration all the safety of how do we get into town and out of town and all of that. So the kids brainstormed and they thought, okay, so we've attacked distractibility of devices. Now let's think bigger. And what affects everyone? So not just schoolchildren, but what affects every member of our town? And we thought, listen, we've all grown up on the bike path. We use it all the time. We are pedestrians going back and forth to all of these events. And it must be challenging to be able to keep people safe and slow traffic and that sort of thing. So the kids all brainstormed and they came up with ideas on how to slow traffic and keep travelers safe, whether they're, you know, crossing an intersection or coming down the bike path and that sort of thing on a bicycle or walking. And so they brainstormed and I'm an English teacher at Kicking Moot Middle School. So I knew that I could write an activity plan for them and do a good lesson plan and that sort of thing. But I thought, let me check on the science. So I reached out to Roger Williams University and the engineers came. They were glad to help us. So they sent a professor and some students and they worked with us just to hear out our ideas and see if they were scientifically sound. And then we approached Town Council and asked, would it be okay if we did a study to see how travelers go down the bike path? And when they're crossing an intersection, how do they behave? And how can we maybe help increase the safety at those crossings? So my students and I, in the middle of January, did that study. We had the permission and we reached out to DOT as well because obviously the bike path is state property and so we needed permission from Town Council. We also reached out to Warren Town Council. Because we're a regional school district, we would like to make sure that everyone's aware and understands our project and feels comfortable with what we wanted to do and keep the kids safe while they did their study. So I was so grateful because Mr. Caloro really actually opened some doors for us. I had reached out to DOT, but I'm just a teacher. And I had reached out to the governor's office. The governor's office did respond well. I really liked the project. But then I wasn't hearing back from DOT. And Mr. Caloro really helped hear out the project, listen to the ideas that the kids thought about everything and all of the sides and angles that we needed to really think about because it's challenging to come up with solutions for adults, never mind, you know, students who are learning about engineering and that sort of thing. So together, we reached out to all of the community members, the stakeholders, and we were able to get permission. And so we did all of those field studies to see how people behaved and it was interesting to see what we discovered. So can I let the kids just share a little bit about what they discovered?
Please.
Okay. So who can tell everyone sort of what we found out about bicyclists? So this is the dirty truth now we're going to share with you. The research did show it, but we didn't want to believe it, but we found out with our own eyes. Do you want to share?
Yeah. Okay. So basically...
Before you start, could you tell us who you are?
Yeah. Hi. I'm Christiana Cabral.
Thank you.
We found out that the majority of people who don't stop at all, pedestrians and bikers are adult males because they're out there to exercise, basically, and they like, they don't want to stop for even the state issued stop signs. We also found that the majority of cars don't stop either because there's, there aren't really any stop signs to tell people to stop when there's an upcoming crossing with the bike path. And with the crossing that we worked with, the stop sign was actually after the crosswalk. So kind of like, it's kind of hard to see the crosswalk and the stop sign that's after the crosswalk and then stop for that. It's kind of weirdly positioned. So we just, we saw that the majority of people really just aren't stopping, cars and pedestrians like.
So we went to the, you know, the think tank, came together and they decided...
Could you come up to the mic?
Sure.
Thank you. They can't hear you at home, that's why.
So the think tank came together and they decided, all right, so what can we do to slow traffic? So they wanted to come up with two different ideas that might help pedestrians and two different ideas that might help the drivers. So anybody want to share what we came up with for the pedestrians?
My name's Alice Grantham. And what we did for the pedestrians was we actually had two different systems that we tried. One was convex mirrors so that they can, even if they don't want to stop, they can at least look up at the mirror and see if cars are coming. But not that many people even really looked at it. And the other was a motion powered light that was solar powered. That way we wouldn't have to worry about batteries or anything. And it would kind of like flash when the bikers went by to like remind them to stop at the bike path. But they also didn't really follow that.
And so for the drivers, we coded and, oh, well, I helped code an app or an enhancement to any like already used navigation app that would allow like, kind of like a warning for the drivers when they were arriving at a bike path intersection. We all use, well, my parents use Google Maps and some parents use Waze. And we found that there aren't really any warnings for when you're arriving at a bike path. And because so many people use like navigation apps, it could really be helpful, especially if you're in a new area and you don't really know if there's a bike path or not. And so we've been talking to an app or two? Yeah, we've been, we've been talking to Waze about getting that into their app as an update. The other thing that we did for the drivers, which you might have seen in the newspaper, we drew a 3D crosswalk down on Mulberry Street. And we, in art class, we were learning about perspective and how to make something look 3D even if it's on a piece of paper. So we applied that to the road and we drew points, we drew lines from a certain point and then added a shadow underneath it. And so if you're a driver and you're coming down on Mulberry Street and you look at it, it looks like it's actually floating up in the air, which will kind of catch your eye and make you stop. Which after we did our field study, we found that it was 100% successful. All the cars either stopped or they slowed down to the point of almost stopping, which was a lot better than what we had found before. And we ended up, we did the 3D crosswalk for the drivers and not the bikers because I feel like if I was a biker and I was going up to something and I thought it looked like it was actually that I would have like fallen off my bike. Because I'll like slam my brakes and I'll go side to side. So that's why we did it, ended up doing it for the drivers and not the bikers because they have more control over how they're going.
And I just said, clarifying, just to clarify, what is the little floating, what is it? And it's to warn the drivers, correct? Not the bikers?
So there's actually a photo going around.
Oh, great.
So we drew it with street chalk. It's semi-permanent. It's supposed to stay for six months. And so it looks like it's actually like floating up in the air, but it's actually just drawn.
Oh, all right. Thank you.
Mike, could you zoom up on that? So this is just outstanding. My colleagues and I just, we love sharing your success. We've all reached out in times and places to the school committee and we would love to do more of this, sharing the students' success. I went to last week's school committee meeting, just sat in the back and watched each one of you get an award. And also, I think you mentioned it a little bit, but you've got, you were recognized by the governor. You have a commendation from the governor from the hard work. And I think you're actually also, you got the Samsung award too. And I'm sure you were going to get there, but that's phenomenal. Please.
That's excellent.
So it's, it's an interesting time to be a teacher because the blending of technology with education is just a powerful, powerful tool. So in my English classroom, when I teach kids to analyze literature, I'm sure you read at one point in your either middle school or high school career, The Telltale Heart by Edgar Allan Poe. So that's part of my required curriculum. And what I have these students do is they actually create a video game where they have to present the theme of the story and code the whole video game, create it from the backside. So they're building the video game out of code and they're analyzing the characters and what are the symbols and what is the conflict and the motivation and all of those things. And so just from that classroom knowledge, these kids were able to run with it and then attach that experience to a real world situation. So how are we going to code an app that a driver could use that's not going to be dangerous, that they're going to have to look at their phone, but they can listen to an auditory alert that is not available to them to let them know that the bike path is coming ahead? A lot of people use navigation systems while they're driving and currently the bike path is not listed as an auditory alert. They have so many things. And so it's really a quick update, but it was kind of fun for the kids to think about how do we code that? And so just taking that knowledge and applying it, it's really, just shows the kids how the things they learn in school can then be used in the real world. So it's a nice opportunity for them to become part of the thinkers and the problem solvers for the community. So the governor has really invested money in that sort of education, the blending of technology into the classroom. And so she was just excited about the project for that reason because it was a good example of how you might use science, technology, math and integrate it into the classroom. And so she did honor each of these students with a citation acknowledging their blending of science, technology, math and engineering into their, their project. So that was exciting. And in addition to that, the Samsung Corporation that makes the cell phones and televisions, now they make everything, household appliances, they have awarded these students $20,000 to help upgrade the technology at Mount Hope High School, which we saw it as an opportunity to help the community again because we know that next year, part of the school budget is to upgrade the technology at Mount Hope High School. So rather than buying additional things, how about if we use that money to ward that initiative that's already there so we can help? But these kids have worked really hard and just holding on to your seats because I think they're going to go all the way to DC. And if they do, Samsung will give them $50,000 if they're invited. So we'll find out on March 4th if they're invited to the Nationals. I, I'm telling you right now, my gut tells me, I have 22 years in the classroom, these kids have a really good chance.
Mrs. Cabral, would you share everyone's name for the, for all of us?
Yes, I will. So if they go to Nationals, they'll win $50,000. But if they win, they'll get $100,000 to ward that high school initiative. So very proud to share with you. We have DeeDee Meta on the end there. We have Abby Haru. We have Alice Grantham. We have Michaela Hudon. We have Jacob Perry. We have Odin Guadro. And we have Christiana Cabral. And the very cool thing is that they all have really unique talents. So, you know, DeeDee's my coder when I need to ask a coding question. Abby is like the kid who pulls the whole team together when it's freezing and quote unquote, "Mrs. Cabral, we're dying out here." She pulls the whole team together. So she can do all, but her motivation skills are dynamic. And then we have Alice, the engineer. Michaela is our, don't break the rules, Mrs. Cabral. So she's always checking, you know, what are the legal sides of things? What do we need to follow? Looking for logos and she's also our videographer. And then we have Jacob Perry, who is our connection to the press. For some reason, they like to interview him. He's well spoken. But he's also our data cruncher. He crunches all our numbers for us, figures out how we're going to create this mathematical situation on a street without getting run over. So it's important. And then we have Odin, who had to create and compose music for the video that we submit in order to win the next prize, the $50,000. And he composed the music that will play with all of the pictures that the team has taken and the documentation, the video of all of the work that they've done that will be submitted to either win the $50,000 and possibly the $100,000 from the Samsung Corporation. And then Christiana also has helped with the videography. So she's used her drone. She had to learn how to use a drone in order to film. But she also helped with writing the script of the entire documentation because she'd like to be a writer someday. So I try to get them to all think about what do you want to be when you grow up and use those skills in order to problem solve. And so the blending of all of those talents creates some pretty dynamic work. And so it's great for them to see how they work together. And someone asked them in the press, you know, the press can be tough to deal with.
Really?
Oh, wow.
Sorry.
So I, I sort of prepped them a little bit for that. I hope I did, but I think they saw it firsthand. And they were really great because the press wanted to dig at them and say, you know, who tries to be the boss and who tries to take over and who's? And really, they said it really nicely. They said, you know, we each have our own skills and our own tasks and we just go off and do them. And then somehow we, it all gets pulled together and we have this great project and we didn't even know what those two were doing while we were doing this. And we're just all hands on deck and then it get, the work gets done. And so it was just great.
Well, to all of you, to your family, congratulations. This is phenomenal and thank you for sharing it with us.
Thank you.
Please keep us in the loop about the $50,000 and the $100,000. More importantly, if you are successful with all of that.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Best of luck going to Washington.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
We hope so.
This was a neat, amazing project. I read about it a couple of times in the paper and online and it was just amazing. I wish you all the very, 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 very best. And just when you talked about the male bikers, shortly after the really serious fatal accident that we had in Bristol, I was on Franklin Street in Warren going to Hope in Maine. And a few weeks later, after there's so much publicity about it, one guy almost, and they have stop signs at the regular height over there. And one guy on a bike came through, a car almost hit him and he started yelling at the person. And I thought like, you just blew through a stop sign. And then two seconds later, a couple of real serious bikers who hopefully looked a few minutes before they came to the intersection, went right through, didn't even stop. And I thought to myself, I could not believe it because there's just so much about it. So, and they were, all three of them were males, you know, in different ages. I mean, the first one I mentioned was, I think, like older. The other two may, maybe in their 30s. The other one may have been in his 50s or 60s.
We can't see hexagons. That's the problem.
They're out to... So actually, we're going to slip an idea to your team and you don't need to say anything now because I know you probably have to discuss it, but we have this great idea.
Do you want to share?
Do you want to ask?
Yeah. Come on. I love these kind of projects.
So we have this idea because it is Bristol and the 4th of July is near and dear to our hearts. We thought of, we've already asked the DOT, but just like putting it out there, not for permission. But we're wondering if maybe that crosswalk where Gooding Avenue and Hope intersect at the end there, there's a giant crosswalk. And it's really the first pedestrian crosswalk before you get to the parade. And so we thought like overnight hours when there's not a lot of travelers, we could maybe like just shut down that section of the block and reroute traffic around where the high school is. You know, that street up by People's Credit Union.
Naomi.
Yeah. And create a 3D crosswalk, not permanent, just like we did for our study, just in chalk. It lasts about maybe, they say up to six weeks it washes away, but we thought of doing it in red, white and blue. So we thought that would be really cool for all of the pedestrians that come into town to see that 3D crosswalk as they come in and just a reminder to sort of slow traffic, be aware that there's increased pedestrians in Bristol at that time and that sort of thing. So we're just slipping that idea out there.
So I'll tell you what, why don't we do this? Let's talk about it. We'll certainly work with the chief and DOT. And if, if there's a possibility of it, certainly we're, I won't speak for my colleagues, but I get the feeling that we'd probably be open to such a thing. Certainly if we go through all, unfortunately, we have regulations up the yin yang. So it's, it's a tad challenging. But, but that doesn't mean, as we've already talked about, that there isn't possibilities there, but certainly, let's talk about it. Absolutely.
Great. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Congratulations again, everybody. Nice job. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council. The first item on this evening's agenda is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve. So you have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is item B1. This is a public hearing regarding zoning ordinance 2018-18. This is to amend the permitted use table to include food and kindred products manufacturing, including canning or packaging in several zones by special exception. It is a public hearing.
So this is a public hearing. So I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Please.
Hello. My name's Kyle Mashad. So I'm the owner of the proposed brewery that would be going in there. Name of the brewery is Twelve Guns Brewing. We have a very cool theme. The whole background story behind our name kind of goes with Bristol's sailing community and Rhode Island's history as a whole. Whereas in 1776, Rhode Island was the first state to commission a naval vessel. It was the USS Providence. It was a twelve gun ship. So that kind of encompassed our name. And then that's kind of the theme that we kind of, we play on. So all of our logo work, all of our can designs, the way that the brewery would be laid out on the inside, kind of has that feel of nautical, but not like a cheesy nautical thing. It's just very all well put together. Really want to be a community space, want to turn into a, go ahead.
I need to stop you just for a sec. This is an actual, this is the ordinance to allow for this to happen. It's not specifically for the brewery that you speak of. I'm okay with 30 second commercials. You're there, so why don't you give us a 30 second commercial on it?
Yeah.
Absolutely. But you'd want to speak specifically to why you believe this ordinance is appropriate or not. Well, actually, we're in the appropriate section, so.
Yeah.
Please.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, I definitely would speak in favor for it. Just along the lines that it, being able to have the ordinance amended and then getting that special use permit would be, I think, greatly beneficial to Bristol as a whole.
And where are you considering opening? You're here, let's just do this now.
Yeah. So 549 Medicom Ave. It's a new construction building. There's the guy that owns the whole property. He also has a car wash there. The lumberyard's like right behind us.
Arnold Lumber and all of that, right?
Yep. Yeah. So we would be in half of the building, take up 50% of it. It's about 2350 square feet.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Charles Kelner, 10 Hope Street, Bristol. That's the first I've heard this gentleman speak, but I think this is a phenomenal idea. As some of you know, I, before retirement, was a municipal official. This is precisely the type of business I would want to have brought to my town when I was a town manager. There's virtually no negative impact. There's opportunities for synergy with other businesses. This would bring people to Bristol outside of the busy summer months, which would also, you know, provide another benefit. This is a spectacular idea. We can, or if the proprietor wants to, they could join other similar, similarly situated, pardon me, businesses in other communities. And there's, I've participated myself in tours of, whether it's winery, local wineries, local breweries, and it's a great tourist attraction. I think it's just a phenomenal idea and urge that favorable consideration be given to this zoning change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Diane, if you wouldn't mind, if you could just kind of share again what the goal was behind this. I'm going to start it for you, just for clarity, second, the state passed a law, what, approximately two years ago? Does that sound about right? Which allows for breweries. The discussion here specifically had to do with, breweries were allowed, but it has to do with not having to get a liquor license for a brewery. The goal behind this ordinance was to have a system in place that allowed for it, because of course it's state law to do that, but to have a clear step and also to have public dialogue anytime this was discussed, to make sure that it wasn't a buy right, which is a way of saying, I own this property, it's in a particular area, I can just do this. So it required a special use permit, or that's what we're talking about right now, to discuss this in public. So if you live next door and you want to speak in favor, wonderful. If you have concerns and you want to express them, wonderful. But it makes sure that that opportunity exists before those things are allowed. And that would happen through our zoning board. How'd I do, Diane?
That's, you did it. That's it.
All right. What's my colleague's thoughts?
I'm definitely in support of the microbrewery and I'll definitely go forward and make a motion to approve and update the permit use table to allow the microbrewery. a motion to approve and update the permit use table to allow the microbrewery. So, I just, I agree. I think it's, it's good for the town. We need to, we want a thriving economy. It's another reason to come to the town, and we're happy that you picked us.
Kyle, thanks for coming and presenting a little bit about the, your business over here. I think that this is a great idea. I think we need to be sending a signal out to all entrepreneurs that this is the type of business that we're willing to accept here in Bristol. We, I think, we want to send a signal that Bristol has opened a business, and this is exactly the type of stuff that you're seeing everywhere else. And there was not one brewery, I will say, in that East Bay. And so, when everybody's traveling across the state, they're going to Pawtucket, they're going to One Socket, they're visiting all these breweries, and they're getting the Rhode Island Brewers Guild thing, they have a stamp that you can get at each individual brewery, and there was not one brewery in the East Bay. There was one on Equidnic Island over there in Portsmouth. And so, I think we'll be very happy to have something like that over here, so that people can come over here, visit Bristol, and then pick up a growler or a beer, and then go into our businesses and get a bite to eat as well. So, thank you very much.
Sounds like a stamp for approval there.
Mr. Solicitor.
Yes. Could I just make a recommendation, Tim, in your motion, that your motions should state that you move approval of ordinance number 2018-18 as presented, that you specifically find that the ordinance amendment is consistent with the general purposes of zoning in the comprehensive plan, and that you adopt, adopt and incorporate as your own the recommendation from the planning board, as set forth in January 11, 2019, correspondence from Diane Williamson.
I must tell you, Mike, that's exactly what I heard Tim say, just to be clear.
Slight change here. So, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Just a quick point, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
No. Wish you the best. Certainly is a little bit overdue for the area, so wish you the best. As already my colleague pointed out, yeah, you know, so.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
The, the next item is also an advertised public hearing. This is for the transfer of the capital stock of the famed Street Landing Tavern Company, LLC. There are several recommendations provided from the fire chief, the chemist pre-treatment coordinator, the police chief, and the town administrator. There's also at least one unresolved small objection regarding funds owed.
So, this is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open the public hearing, and I'm guessing you're here to speak in favor, so.
I am. Attorney Alfred Arriaga Jr. on behalf of Fame Street Landing. This is, as indicated in the advertisement, it's not a transfer of license per se. It's that Si had purchased out the controlling interest in his, from his co-partners in the LLC, so he is now 100% owner. He's been managing, operating the tavern for over a decade at this point in time. Nothing's really changing, other than the technicality of now being 100%, as opposed to a 10% owner of the establishment. And in addition to this transfer, there's also the vitring license and what goes with it. This objection that was filed is whenever there's a notice of a license transfer, any of the providers of materials and supplies and the like file, but that will be resolved. They just weren't aware it was a transfer of stock, as opposed to the transfer of a license. But I see that as a formality. Within 48 hours, we'll get that resolved with the, with the supplier. Si is here.
Hello, Si.
Lovely wife, and his baby is with him. As far as what will happen with the establishment, nothing that hasn't been there since the last 10 years. Si's pretty much managing it, running it. He's a chef. It's his operation, and the other parties were silent partners, and they've all retired and gone on to better, more relaxing ways, I guess.
Congratulations, Si.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion based on.
Actually, we can't. We're still in public hearing?
Sorry.
Yeah. I have a question.
Certainly.
I'm a little unclear. Did I hear correctly that this will be resolved with spending right now?
Well, it's an unpaid bill because he's not on COD. He's on a paid payment plan with some of these suppliers. This particular supplier assumed it was a sale and not a transfer, so they submitted the objection, but it's just a formality of getting them to release it, that's all.
So, you're saying that, that this is typically 30 days due, and this could be in the middle of that, and then, just in case there was any question, because something is changing with the license, they wanted to express that there was something owed. It isn't necessarily late.
This slept by me. If I had known earlier, I would have resolved it before tonight, but it just came in last minute.
Okay. Is there any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Can I have a motion to close both the hearing?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. That's what I heard. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night.
So, what's this council's pleasure?
Oh, I move that we grant the, the transfer of stock. Is that the right motion? And provided that all the rules and regulations and payments are cleared up, whatever needs to be done legally. And I just want to congratulate you for becoming 100% owner. You've done a great job with your establishment over the years, and must be very exciting for you to be totally in control, but you know you have 100% of the headaches too, I guess.
It all comes with the territory.
But congratulations to you.
Second.
Nice, Miles.
There's a motion and a second. I had actually a question for the chief. Chief, I saw in here, and I think this was probably our, our classic recommendation, it suggested a 90-day review period. I'm wondering, was that just kind of, I hate to call it boilerplate, but something along that line of when we're going from one order to the other? That's what it was suggested in this instance?
That is correct.
Okay.
It's a formality. We made sure that, you know, we want to keep everyone on the same sheet of music.
Fair enough.
All right.
Okay. Great. So, we had a motion and a second to approve. Any other dialogue? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Congratulations.
Is it, just want to be clear, is it the council's intention to bring this back in 90 days, or would it be the, perhaps the, the chief would come back to you if he anticipated difficulty within 90 days?
Second of the two.
Yeah.
Unless someone disagrees. Okay.
Okay. I kind of thought that's what you wanted to do.
That's what I was.
Exactly. Okay. So, the next item is for the same petitioner, a request for a vittling license. You have a similar set of recommendations.
Based on all the approvals, I'll make a motion to approve the vittling license.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the petition of Karen McCarthy Perusek, doing business as Courteous K9 LLC, One Vast Lane, request the modification of the kennel license previously granted to her. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator, the zoning officer, and the police chief.
Is Karen here? Did she want to speak on this? I don't know if she's here. The applicant here? No. Okay. So, chief, could you share, I know, and also, Mr. Solicitor, I know that there was also some findings that you had. If you could just share the, the recommendation to the council to deny, I know this license was just granted, I'm gonna say, the end of December. Does that sound correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
It was granted with the understanding that there would be a, a limited amount of dogs on the property. They're backed before you to increase it, similar to what you just asked. Usually, we would like to do everything on a trial basis. I understand that, you know, the neighbors right now are all for this and cooperating and everything, but as we know, one neighbor could move, and the next neighbor come in and not agree with an individual having seven or eight dogs on the property. So, at this point, it being a month old, our recommendation is, let's try it. We haven't even got to the time where the spring's gonna be here, people are gonna be in their yards, the windows are gonna be open, someone could have a change of heart. So, my recommendation is, we go with the first petition that was granted, and if the petitioner would like to come back, six months down the road, once we get through the spring and maybe into the summer, and there are no formal complaints, no issues, no concerns that are gonna create a problem for the neighborhood, that the police have to get involved, and that it has to be brought before the council. That's the, that's the recommendation for denying it.
I think that's right.
And Mike, could you share also?
The, the applicant, in support of a request for additional dogs at her kennel, cited to a state law, it's in your packet, and although that state law does reference the fact that, that basically if you only have four dogs above and beyond the dogs that you own, and she has three that she owns, and she's asking for the four, that it should be allowed, there actually is a very specific provision of the statute which states, unless the municipality has more restrictive requirements. In our case, we do. And I'll also point out that this is coming through you as a home occupation. It's, it's in a residential neighborhood, and I think that's why the chief is recommending that we take this slowly, make sure it works. You just issued it in December of 18. Let's perhaps look at it again, but it's a little quick to do this, plus this state law really doesn't help her. It doesn't mean that at some future point, you could agree to increase the number of dogs because you have that authority, but it, this, she cannot rely on this statute to bypass your process.
Chief, I just have a question. I was talking to the animal control officer. She did do an onsite visit, and she seemed, she seemed like it would be okay, and I understand your concerns about the nuisance, and I agree with you, Si, on the safety, and then we move, we move up from there. Is there any reason for the six months? Is there any way we could do a shorter time period or anything like that? Or, because what I'm hearing is she's not there all the time, and she is in North Kingston and back and forth, and I'm just looking at the ease of doing business, that's all.
Right. And again, we're never opposed to anyone running a business, as long as it doesn't create a problem for someone else. The reason why, as I just pitched it out there, come the spring, April or May, I think is when the average person starts opening their windows, where if there's someone that's running a garage next door, okay, with vehicles, motorcycles or cars, the neighbors tend to get a little bit restless when they start hearing that. During the winter, unless the motorcycle or the car is really revving, they're not gonna hear them. People are out in the yard in the spring, people start having little picnic, picnics, they start cleaning up the yard. That's where I think, if there's gonna become an issue, it'll, it'll surface, and we're hoping not. So, that's why I think if we gave it six months, we'll be into June, July, and we'll be able to vent it, because we don't want someone to make an issue that really doesn't exist either. We want to be able to, if a complaint is sent to the police department, as you know, we want to validate it. We don't want it just because the person has a problem with that person next door. It's not fair to this petitioner. If, in fact, she can run this there without much of a problem, we're not gonna oppose it, believe me. We'd like to, you know, she's a resident, she's a taxpayer, we give her all the rights she's entitled to. We just don't want to create a problem for anyone else that may be attached that's a legitimate person. That's my reasoning for it.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, my question might be a little bit more for Mike. What if she, what if we did approve the, the four dogs on her property, which is, well, she's got her own dogs, so we can't really count those. So, what if we approved the four dogs, and then there's a complaint about it or something like that? Is there a way to come back and bring it back down to the two?
So, you, you always have the power to revoke for cause a license that you grant. That's sometimes difficult, because then you have to have a hearing, you need to bring the applicant back, you have to hear testimony, maybe from neighbors, maybe from the chief as to why. So, yes, you can go that route. My recommendation would be to do at least some type of a period of time that gets us into the months when the screens and windows are open to make sure. It's up to you. I mean, you could choose the length of time. You know the chief's recommendation's a six months, and why, if you went six months from December, that would bring you into June.
What's this council's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I have to concur. I actually took some time. I dropped by the neighborhood, you know. I thought I was familiar with it, and, but I just wanted to be sure that I was, even though it was quite an investigative report, and it was very nicely done, but I wanted to physically walk the neighborhood there, and I have to concur. At this point, she already has been issued a license. We should do a trial period. Let's get into the warm weather, and at that point in time, because it is a very dense neighborhood, and I, I can, you know, there is potential, you know, for some problems in that particular neighborhood, you know, because of how close the houses are. So, I would concur that we should, you know, deny it at this point and just revisit a future date.
I agree 100% too. I mean, I don't think we should ask for trouble. It's harder to undo it than it is to just make sure that we are on the right path, and when you issue something like this in the winter months, it's really hard to project what it's going to be for the spring, the summer, and the fall. So, I think we should wait, and she can always come back in the summer or in the fall with an increase in the petition, in the number of, of dogs, but right now, I don't think we should make that move.
Was that a second, Mary?
Oh, we're looking for a second. Yeah, sure.
Okay. Is there a discussion? So, I, I agree. I would absolutely be open to the June or summer months, if you will, or in and around that area, open to that possibility of looking at this again if everything looks great. So, I would not be opposed to doing it at that point in time, but I do agree that, at this point, I think it makes sense to deny. So, we have a motion and a second to deny. Is there any other discussion? So, all in favor to deny?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed to that denial? Okay. Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, is the petition of Carly Rish for the Bristol Warren Education Foundation, request one-day dancing and entertainment license for March 9, 2019. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator, fire chief, public works director, and also the police chief.
Based on all the positive recommendations, I make a motion to approve the request for one-day dancing and entertainment license.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is, is item F1. This is the petition of Michael T. Burns on behalf of Explore Bristol for the British Motor Car Festival, requesting for permission to use and serve, sell alcohol, alcoholic beverages, and a one-day dancing and entertainment license, temporary road closure, et cetera, and a portion of Fame Street, and permission for a special event at Independence Park on June 7, 2019, and to use Town Beach and Sports Complex on June 8, 2019. I will provide a footnote that there is no alcoholic beverages planned for the Town Beach Complex. planned for the Town Beach Complex. You have recommendations provided by the Town Administrator, Public Works Director, Police Chief, Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation.
I move that we grant the request, and I can just say that not only have we had warm weather this week, but this agenda is filled with springs in the air, isn't it? The carnival on the common, the, you know, Fourth of July, this, and the bee, everything else is coming up, so we're getting all prepared for our fun events coming up, so.
I'll, sorry.
Passage, no, go ahead.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion, and I interrupted, please.
No, I will second it, but with that, I have to say, I'm glad to see that we continue to host the British Car Festival, am I reading that correct? Oop, glasses would help, okay. Certainly, the motorcar show has been quite interesting. I remember when it started, and certainly, it's an initiative that I have to thank Mike and quite few other folks for starting it, so looking forward to it.
Agreed. We have a motion and a second to approve, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Item F2 is the petition of Michelle Martins, on behalf of Edward Corey of the Fourth July Committee, request use of the Town Common for the carnival from June 23 through July 5. You have recommendations provided by the Town Administrator, Fire Chief, Public Works Director, Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation, and also the Police Chief.
Based on all the positive recommendations, I make a motion to approve the use of the Town Common for the carnival from June 23 to July 5 of 2019.
Second. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the item G1, this is for your Public Service Appointment Section. You have the Bristol County Water Authority as a three-year term, with term expiring in February of 2022. You have Georgina McDonald, who has requested interest in being reappointed. I will remind the council that you have another seat that is also under consideration, where you'll be having interviews next week.
Make a motion to reappoint Georgina to the seat of the Bristol County Water Authority.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And also the zoning board of review, that's item G1B, a five-year term expiring in March of 2023. You have the application of Joseph Pia Shola, 1220 Hope Street, who is interested in being reappointed.
Mike, I need to recuse myself in this instance, is that correct?
Actually, you don't, although you had to appear before the zoning board, and actually Andy Tiskel is in the same situation. The Ethics Commission ruled that once a new election took place, your conflict went away, so you can vote.
Thank you.
You're good.
I'm back in.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Joseph Ashola to the zoning board of review.
Second. There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As we always do, thank you to the boards and commissions for your efforts, energies, time away from your families and friends to give back to the town, we very much appreciate it.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is continued from your previous meeting, this has to do with the previous discussion regarding the Volkswagen Dieselgate Fund.
If I could get a motion to continue, for classic state business, it is going very slow, so.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to continue, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Continue to next, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
No, if we go two, it'll take three, if it's, I'm hoping, motivate, if you will.
Thank you.
The next item is item I1, from my office, this is putting forth the suggested budget workshop and adoption schedule for the upcoming fiscal year.
So our town budget will be presented to the council and to the public on March 18, that's Monday, March 18, and that's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and in those days, we discuss, excuse me, discuss departments, and finance, and all human services and human resources. It's a fun-filled four days, but extremely important. We take it seriously, and it affects all of us, and what happens out here and what doesn't happen out here. So, we just need a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I do think it is a fun-filled four days, or five days, I do, I enjoy listening to the departments.
I.
Look forward to it.
I said it tongue-in-cheek, read into it as you were.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, the next is item J1, this is bid 898 for the multidisciplinary engineering and landscape design firm for the Bristol Golf Course water quality improvements. Provided for you is a list of those who have provided their qualifications. This was basically a request.
Well, I too, is that going to be put over to the next, I don't think, it's on our, it's in our packet, I don't think it was supposed to be, and I don't think it was prepared yet, ready yet, Bristol County Water Authority on the pilot agreement?
That was supposed to, the item was supposed to come off the agenda, which it did, but it was copied, so that'll be on for next time.
Right, okay, so, oh, it's on the new agenda, right, okay.
Yeah, it'll be on the next agenda, I apologize for that, there was a.
Do you want to collect these all back, so there's a lot of pages here?
Sure, that would be, that'd be great.
Okay, I'm going to write mine on, because I wrote my notes, but.
That's all right.
Okay.
We can do it after, Tony.
Yeah, you can provide it afterwards, not a problem. But I'm just, for the record, I'm going to read those firms that have provided their qualifications, this was a request for qualifications only, it did not consider specific costs. You received proposals from Wright Pierce of Providence, EA Engineering Science and Technology Incorporated of Warwick, Wood Environmental and Infrastructure Solutions Incorporated of Providence, Weston and Sampson of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Par Corporation of Lincoln, Rhode Island, and Caputo and Wick of Rumford.
What motion do you need on that?
I need refer to Town Administrator, in the best interest of the town, if you so desire.
Second. There's a motion and a second to refer to Town Administrator, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And similarly, we have bid number 899, and this is for the Information Technology and Consulting Services for the town. We received three proposals, but in looking at the way that the proposals were submitted, it was very difficult to compare apples to apples. So, again, with your indulgence, I would just read those, the names of those companies that have submitted these, and then you would look forward to hearing more regarding a further qualification step. It was kind of all over the map, the way that they submitted their proposals, so it'd be hard to actually qualify them based upon just numbers. So you heard from Freedom Technology Solutions of Johnston, Rhode Island, Vertical Six of Warwick, Rhode Island, and Information Systems Technology of Portsmouth.
So what's the next step on this, we're just, we're going to receive.
Again, it's a refer to the Town Administrator.
Refer to the Town Administrator, in the best interest of the town?
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. The next item was previously on your last agenda, and it is from Alan Klepper, the Barrington Director of Bristol County Water Authority, who provided his typical report. There was a request in that for the endorsement of a particular letter. There was supposed to be someone here from the authority to speak to that at the last meeting, getting there. And we realized that that did not happen, so the Water Authority did come back and ask us for reconsideration, and I believe Director Juan Mariscal is here to speak to this item.
Welcome.
Just for the record, my name is Juan Mariscal, I live at 1303 Hope Street here in Bristol. As the town clerk mentioned, the chairman of the Bristol County Water Authority has submitted a letter that we intend to send to the governor and our state senators and representatives, outlining an issue that the Bristol County Water Authority is facing, and it always comes down to funding. And I can, I can talk for an hour and a half, I can talk for 10 minutes, I can give you a quick synopsis of what's going on, and I will do that. There are a lot of issues here, but I think it's, one of the things I wanted to point out is, recently, we had an incident, we'll call it, with National Grid, where Quidnic Island, substantive portion of Quidnic Island, lost gas services, and it all came down to a valve, a valve not working. And, you know, I'm an engineer, and we like to think that we solve all these problems, but a lot of the problems always come down to, maybe there was a design deficiency, or maybe it was just a lack of maintenance, or a lack of oversight, or something like that. And it can come down to a little thing, you know, the old poem there, you know, "For the want of a nail, the kingdom was lost." And what we're outlining in this letter is that basically, there are funds provided or authorized in state legislation for the project that we're talking about, but there's no funds that have been appropriated. And I was the director of the Water Resources Board a long time ago now, and we talked about this project back then, but there was never any funds to do the project. And what has specifically happened here is, and I don't want to give you the whole history of Bristol Water, but you need to know that you go back to 1880, in the 1880s, when the Bristol County Water Company was, first was in business, and they built the treatment plant back in 1900, early 1900s, 1908, I believe. That treatment plant served the public for a very long period of time. The state put in a lot of money to upgrade that facility, and the work was done, the work was done according to the standards and so forth. Standards change, public health issues, new public health issues, you have to upgrade, you have to upgrade, you have to upgrade. The treatment plant is at a point now where it's virtually non-functional. We are fortunate that we were able to build the Cross Bay Pipeline, and we now get water from Situate, and we drink that water every day. It's great water, has high quality, we have good supply. We also have, we had opportunities in the past to make other connections, but unfortunately, sometimes it's difficult to get cities and towns in Rhode Island, and regions in Rhode Island to get together. East Providence built a connection to the Providence system in the 1960s because their water system wasn't functioning properly, and it was becoming polluted. So they came to the Bristol County Water Company and said, hey, you want to go in on this project with us? And the company said, no. So you speed up the timeframe, the Bristol County Water Authority wants to put in the Cross Bay Pipeline, they go to East Providence and say, hey, you want to go in on this project with us? And they say, no, this time. And we're now at a point where we're saying, our treatment plant, it's not working, it's going to take a lot of money to get it to be fully functional, and serve as a backup to where we get water presently. So the board made the decision, we need to pursue other options. And the option that we're pursuing is a connection with the city of Pawtucket. I grew up in the city of Pawtucket. I know there's, water quality in Pawtucket is legendary, but I might say the same about Bristol, too. But that was a long time ago, same with Pawtucket. Pawtucket faced the same situation, almost the same situation as here in Bristol. Their treatment plant was aging, they got to a point where they said, it's ready to literally fall apart, and they spent about $100 million building a new treatment plant, state-of-the-art. Water is great. And so the idea here is to put some, it's simple, pipe, a pipe in the ground from point A to point B, make some connections, and it'll be done. We've got agreements with Pawtucket and East Providence to be able to do this project, the issue comes down to money. Bristol County Water Authority is prepared to go forward with the project without additional funding, but state law says these kind of regional projects, these projects have regional impact, where you're connecting water systems, those are available for 50% funding. So we're, in this letter, we're basically saying to the governor and the legislature, hey, get us some money to do this project. It's going to benefit a major portion of Rhode Island, because not only Bristol County will benefit, East Providence will benefit, Pawtucket will benefit also. We're not going to abandon our connection with Providence, but we'll have a connection with Pawtucket in case a valve hasn't been maintained, a widget hasn't been changed, or some problem that we don't even want to talk about happens.
So Juan, you're asking this council.
To endorse the letter.
Endorse a letter to get 50% off, is pretty much what you're saying, right?
Exactly.
And I obviously oversimplified that. You've made some really, really good points. This council is, in the town, is quite concerned about one pipe going under salt water, and the issues that could potentially happen.
Right.
And as we've all talked about, but I think it's worth 30 seconds more, of, there's no way to maintain that pipe because it has to be on all the time, and if it's on all the time, you can't go in and do repairs, and maintenance checks, and all of that. So this opportunity would afford that opportunity, making sure that was good for a long time, plus it would share the burden. Bristol represents a little bit more than 50% of the ratepayers for Bristol, for the Water Authority. So of the three towns, we actually represent a little over 50% of the ratepayers, and we represent the majority use, too, with a couple of businesses in town, of course, with the residential. This is an easy lift in my head, this makes sense, the systems are in place in the state to get it done. Whether or not it gets done is a different story, but I'm happy to put my name on this letter to endorse this request.
Mr. Mariscal, I have a question for you. I'm assuming that this is an annual letter that goes out to the state, or is this?
It hasn't been an annual letter, but we've done it before.
Okay, and then Warren and Barrington are all signed on, Alan is?
Warren, Barrington, Town Council approved it, I think it was January 6th or 7th. Warren, I tried to check tonight, and one person told me he thinks it's on the agenda for next week.
Okay. Mary?
I just had a couple of, just quick points, I mean, I can't say how concerned we all are about having a redundant source. It's something that, you know, we tried to maintain when, you know, the Cross Bay Pipeline happened, to keep our system and not give that up. And I think we were all been persuaded over the last several years, those of us who have been on the council, to go with this plan in Pawtucket. And it's been slow-going, as you probably know from, even if you weren't on the authority from your own work. And a lot of that had to do with, you know, East Providence, and whether they would sign on, and so forth and so on, as well as the state funding. So I certainly hope this will make it a dent, and that the legislature and the governor's office will listen and provide some funding. I would like to see us go with the eight, I guess it's the eight million gallons per notice, as opposed to the four, because it doesn't seem like that much of a difference in price, and that would make us maybe, I mean, we've heard different debate about, like, water stagnating and the pipes and so forth, that they can't be too big, but you want to prepare for the future, so if we could do that. I would move that we sign on to this letter, and do everything we can to get this out to all of our legislators, or separate letter, that we endorse this, and we really are serious and need to get it done. And I'm also hopeful that maybe, I have, I just want to ask you about the East Providence thing, I don't know if you want me to just, like, be quiet and just do the motion?
I'll take a second, and then we can have discussion on it, if.
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Mary?
I just had a quick question. I know we had talked about, you know, there were two plans with East Providence. One was to have them go in on it and build their own, you know, have their own redundancy, they have, like, I guess, a small amount of water coming in an emergency with Pawtucket. If they could, and then there was a lot of issues that, where the plan looked like, if we could just get the approvals, we would just do it ourselves. Now that they have a mayor, and maybe their government has calmed down a little bit, is, where does that stand with East Providence?
Yeah, I was just going to answer the question the way you were leading it, and that was that, we've met with previous officials, and now we have a new group of people to deal with, and the intent is to go back. At the staff level, I don't think much has changed. There are other issues that pop up in all of this, but it is in East Providence's best interest to do this as well. We talked, mentioned earlier about the pipeline being under the water. Ours is actually below the water, the bottom of the riverbed, and much deeper, and it's in pretty good a location. East Providence's prime connection to the Providence system, which is up in the India Point area, I've been told that that has been uncovered because of storms and so forth, and it's lying on the floor of the river there. So that is open to possibilities, let's say.
Please, if this council or the town can be of assistance in having the dialogue with East Providence, I know if I was a East Providence councilperson, then I would think that, I would take the attitude that I know what's best for East Providence, and I respect that. But if we can be of assistance to have dialogue with them, this council would be happy to do so. Tim, I interrupted you, please.
Oh, no, I was just going to say, I'm hoping East Providence comes around and looks at the long picture, the big picture of the redundant water supply, because it's really in their best interest as well, you know. We're one catastrophe away from losing our main water supply, and, you know, for them, I know they don't want to be financially bound to this project, but this is, if you look long-term and big picture, this is really the way to go, and I really hope they do come around, and please let us know, Juan, if we need to do anything to reach out to them, as far as to help maybe turn the tides. But it looks like things are changing over there, so hopefully they do come around.
Thank you.
And I would add, I would add to that, that, you know, these water issues, if And I would add, I would add to that, that, you know, these water issues, if anything happens to our water over here in Bristol, that's going to become a regional issue, because there's other towns that do business with us, and so it's going to affect everybody that's kind of in our region. So, thank you for coming here.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve and support. Please.
No, I've been involved in this conversation for nine years, and I'm glad to hear this, this evening, that it's about time that we move forward, and I certainly concur with everybody else in the sign-on. Although, I have a question.
Sure.
I know you said that the current plant that we have in Warren is pretty much phased out, okay? Although, if there was any consideration to rehab it, has there any numbers been put on the table?
The director has used a number of $60 million. Much more expensive than what we're proposing in a connection to Pawtucket.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I do agree with where Tony went with that, and I have been very clear, and I'll continue to be clear, that the water you own is so very important. Go to California, ask them what that means to own water and not to own water. Go to other places around our community, including us. We're the last stop of that water when it comes from Providence. We're the last stop from Pawtucket. That means we're the first to get shut off if there's a problem on it. If we own our own water, we own our own destiny. So, I don't agree, and I've been clear, but let me also be clear, is that I don't want to be an obstructionist in moving forward with Pawtucket. If that's the only option, that's where we're going, that's fine, but I still stand firm saying, "Our water is our water," and we ask no one for the right to use that. And I think that's so valuable. So, we have a motion and a second. I, I know that ju-
No, I, I agree. You know, I know you said the word only, I, I know that is a, an option, but not the only option, and I think we need to keep that on the table, you know? We need to keep an, an open mind, you know, because I concur with Chairman Caloro. We, we don't know, it may come down a pike, so I have very serious concerns about giving that up altogether.
Well, I, I just want to say, I've always had concerns about this for about 25 years.
Good morning, me.
Yes, way one, when I was in the legislature, it was one of the big issues, but, I mean, where do we stand in relation to maintaining the supply with Massachusetts?
That's, that, I'll give you a thumbnail sketch of that. Number one, we don't own-
Right.
The ponds or the, the ponds or the lakes where we get the water from. We own the dams, we own the liability for the dams. We have a lease for the third dam, a lease that we own and maintain it, and we do do that. But those dams, and I said liability, they need to be replaced. Those dams that were earthen dams that were built in the 1880s, they need to be replaced. And that's not an easy thing to do these days, and there's all sorts, and Rhode Island was doing a lot of inspections after a number of the storms. Massachusetts was doing the same kind of thing. So, there are all sorts of standards just for the dams, and we don't own what's behind them. And the other big issue is we don't, we can't control the watershed. That watershed was once farmland or vacant land. It's now subdivisions, and there are no sewers out there, so you have septic systems. So, you have that contaminating the water. So, we have a water supply, but it's not, it's not a large quantity, and it's not a good quality. And that poses additional treatment issues, which raises the cost of both building a facility to handle that kind of water quality, and also in terms of operating, what you're going to do to it, it raises the operating cost also. So, I can agree with you conceptually, and that was the issue going back 15, 20 years ago by the State Water Resources Board and state planning, because there were state policies that basically said you don't abandon a water supply. But in this particular case, we don't own it, and we can't control it. The Water Resources Board, I think, may still do, but we used to give out, when I was there, grants to the water suppliers to buy land around their reservoirs or in critical areas. We couldn't use that money in Massachusetts. Couldn't use Rhode Island state money in Massachusetts to protect the water supply. There were too many legal issues associated with it.
But one omission there is that we don't own the what, we don't own the area and the land, but we do have an agreement to use the water. So, that's, that's a really important point to make. It's not just the dam. But look, at this moment, let's be really clear. What we're supporting right now is, and again, I don't want to be an obstructionist here, we don't have to go down this road. We have a motion and a second to support the request, and certainly we can have some more dialogue about this, but I think we've made a point clear.
And I will certainly bring your sentiments back to the chairman and to the board about what you're saying, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for taking the time to explain what you did tonight.
Thank you. I apologize for not being here last week, last month, there was some kind of communication error, so.
Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
The next item is item L1. These are borrowing resolutions provided by the bond council regarding some infrastructure bank financing.
Mike?
So, these are a series of resolutions that are necessary whereby you'd authorize the borrowing of up to $2,270,000 for improvements to several sewer capital projects, including upgrades, the wastewater treatment plant, drainage improvements at the plant, pilot area flow metering, engineering and construction capital projects, et cetera. This is the legal authority that is necessary before you can go out to bond. So, I would recommend a motion to adopt the resolutions as presented.
So, I'll move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt these resolutions as presented. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next three items are executive session items. Are they still?
Yes.
Okay. And so, we will continue with the individual council member agenda items, beginning with the chairman.
So, in an effort to take down the size of our prerogative section at the end of the meeting, I just had one thing. I didn't speak with the administrator to share all the particulars, but I just wanted to say that, if you don't know, Steve was with family and friends and was skating and fell down and bumped his head, and I am downplaying that a little bit, but he's fine, and this council and the town are wishing him the best. He'll be back soon. I talked to him over the last couple of days, including this morning. He was asking about the meeting and making sure things were all set on his end of things, so we wish him the best. He is okay, but obviously, a bump on the head is never a good thing, so.
Mr. Chairman, we have to get him a skating helmet.
You ruined my little surprise for the next meeting. That's all I had. Thanks, everyone.
Mr. Sweeney?
Democracy is best when more people get involved, and I just want to encourage the residents that are watching tonight to come to the budget. We, we basically accepted the schedule, it starts on Monday, May 18th, but it's your tax dollars, we want to hear from you. We want to know how you want to shape this town and what direction you want to go in, so our ears are open, so please consider coming to the budget and, and walk through with us, and I think it's important for transparency, and we want to hear from you. Have a good night. Thank you.
Mr. Texira?
First of all, congratulations to the Patriots. Did anybody watch that game? There was a game, did you notice? Oh, no? Okay. And the other piece is, I know we're not going to meet before Valentine's Day, so happy Valentine's Day to all the folks out there. I know my wife is watching, so happy Valentine's Day. It's only been 45 years, okay? And the other piece is, thank you to Archie and Mike and-
Right, Archie.
Ken, thank you so much. Have a good night.
Ms. Perella?
Okay. Well, yes, I express happy Valentine's Day to everyone as well. I do have one quick thing, and that is a reminder that we do have a Cooper-scooper law here in Bristol, and I noticed that, you know, maybe because it's cold and people don't want to be outside, but I've noticed a lot of frozen, you know what, around town, particularly in front of my house, and so I think that people just need to be reminded that they get to pick up after their, after their dogs, so.
I second that. Yeah, yeah. I just want to end by, coming back again to the beginning, we had these students come here today who shared with us their experience putting together a project that would do something that they found would improve our town, and, and one of the things I want to say about that is, I think there's a bigger lesson to be learned here, and that's, I know as adults sometimes, we're sometimes shackled by the prisons of our minds, and we instinctively cast aside innovative solutions sometimes, and just because they're unfamiliar or because they come from somewhere else. And I think the lesson that we can learn from these students is that there's no problem out there that's insurmountable, that if we draw from our collective experience or our collective talents, we can get our community behind an idea, and that anything is possible. So, congratulations to those students. We are going to be watching very closely as they go to state, and hopefully, they can bring back some more money to improve some of the technology in our schools, so. Good night.
Okay. I did mention that the administrator is a little bit under the weather in his, on behalf of the administrator, I just wanted to share a couple of things. He did ask me to speak to you about some of the things that are going on in the manufacturing sector in Bristol, is there's kind of a good news report. Some of this is a reminder of things that previously reported on, and some are new. The council did hear about the possibility earlier of an opportunity zone to include the Bristol Industrial Park, and we're pleased to report that the Economic Development Coordinator was able to bring this to a reality. This means that that zone around that existing industrial park is possibly in, in line for some new beginnings. He also asked me to report that the former Hall Spars Building on Broad Common Road is fully occupied now. It was, it was pretty much empty not that long ago. It's occupied by three companies, and we're informed that an America's Cup boat is under construction in that building. And we're also informed that St. Cobain is, is now hiring, and TriMac is increasing its production. So, he did want me to bring some, some good news about what was going on in the manufacturing sector within the town of Bristol.
Excellent. Thank you.
Motion would be to convene into executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 4246-5A2 litigation, Mosaic litigation, Gladding Shops versus Town of Bristol Zoning Board of Appeals, and also pursuant to 4246-5A5 acquisition or lease of real property.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good night, everyone.[1785.92]